All right, we'll call to order this meeting of the work study meeting of Independent School District 14. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chapman?
Here.
Fahey, here. Kimball?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
We have four discussion items on tonight's agenda. The first is the Indigenous Peoples' Day Resolution. I asked Ellen Fahey to give a short introduction to this. I do see Daniel's is on there as well, is it okay? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Adams III, who is the Chair of our American Indian Parent Committee. And if you think back to board meeting on October 10th, Andrew spoke at public forum about a purpose to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day on that second Monday in October. We have a resolution in front of us from the committee for discussion, and Andrew also did send some background materials that has been shared with the board. So, welcome Andrew, and there are some other members from the committee here also, if they'd like to come up, they certainly can.
Other Adamses are welcome up.
You can sit by me.
Ms. Adams, if you want to be introducing your family?
Yeah, I can do that. So, this is my 14-year-old daughter Jennifer Adams, who is an eighth grader at Sunrise Park Middle School.
I'm Danielle DeLong. I am a member of the Ho-Chunk Nation and proud mother of these three and proud wife of Andrew.
I'm Benjamin and...
How old are you?
Eight.
Where do you go to school?
Madison.
Okay.
I'm Andrew. I'm 11 years old and I go to Madison High School.
Yep. And, I mean, I think I've done this a number of times, but I'm Andrew Adams. I'm the chairperson of the White Bear Lake Indian Education Parent Committee. I'm a citizen of the Muskogee Nation, and I'm a father and attorney and husband by trade. And so, I mean, so we're here this evening to talk about the desire of the Indian Ed Parent Committee to have the school board recognize, and it always escapes me, whether it's the second or the third Monday of the second Monday of every October as Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of formally referring to it as Columbus Day. And I think you could see from the materials that I provided that for a lot of folks, it's not about revisionist history, or, and it's not about propaganda or getting people to forget about Columbus. I think what it is, it's to bring awareness to not only the historical contributions, but also struggles and challenges that Native American folks have had over the course of the existence of the United States. And I think you could even take it back further than that to when the first fur traders and other European mercantile traders arrived in the Great Lakes to the southeastern United States and to other areas of North America to introduce, you know, capitalism and other forms of looking at the world. It's an acknowledgement of that steadfast resolve that a lot, not just Native American folks here in the United States have had, but it, what really struck me is that yesterday I was flying back to Minneapolis from Phoenix, and a good friend of mine and I were sitting in the airport, and it was extremely crowded, and this elderly lady from Canada sat down to share a table with us, and we, you know, just kind of struck up a conversation. And she is from Vancouver, British Columbia, and she was talking about how, as a Canadian, she was just kind of struck at how in her interactions with American citizens, their, her perceived lack of their knowledge and understanding of native issues. And in Canada, First Nations issues are at the forefront, I mean, not at the forefront, but they're a lot, they're talked about more often, and in the curriculum in Canadian schools, First Nations history and culture and languages are given a, are given a lot of interest and a lot of time. And to bring it back home to White Bear Lake, I think about my children, and especially my 14-year-old daughter who is becoming very socially aware. She was one of the driving forces for us to travel to the Standing Rock Reservation over MEA days in October to see firsthand the no dapple or no Dakota Access Pipeline protests that were happening on the Standing Rock Sioux Reservation. And it was a very, and I don't want to speak on her behalf, but I know it was a very powerful moment for her, but I will speak on behalf of myself that it was a very powerful moment for me. And again, to kind of correlate that to awareness, I think the New York Times only ran two stories from June or July to November on what was happening in North Dakota. I think USA Today maybe had one article about what was going on. And people were constantly going to third, second and third-party news sources, not the mainstream, like the Washington Post or the Star Tribune or other places to get that story. And I see as being analogous, this issue of Indigenous Peoples' Day versus Columbus Day. I see Indigenous Peoples' Day as a way for the district to celebrate the contributions of Indigenous people, of Native American, of First Nations folks in the school, in the schools in the district, to acknowledge the contributions that have been provided by them, and again, not to dispel or take anything away from Columbus Day or its recognition as a federal holiday, but to give that voice to, and that acknowledgement to young people. Because I think in a lot of respects, and again, I'll speak for myself, I attended public K through 12 education in the suburb, well, in the city of Detroit and then in the suburbs of Detroit. And Native American folks did not have much of a place in the curriculums in those, in those schools. And actually, not much of a place in my first and even second year of college at the University of Michigan. And what really strikes me about that is that when it, when Native American folks were brought up in the curriculum, it was always as the past tense, as a long time ago, or, you know, in the past. And I think by recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, you can bring Native American folks into an acknowledgement that they're still here, they're still making contributions to United States history and American culture and American society. And then for students such as these, and of course, I'm biased because they're my children, but for them as White Bear Lake students, they see that, they see that as a significant acknowledgement of them as individuals, but also their rich history and current culture and current issues.
If I can just add, not nearly as much as Andrew, but just a little bit, as a parent, and I'm also an educator, I do realize that the state of Minnesota is very progressive as far as addressing American Indians in the curriculum on more than one subject matter. You know, it's not just in art, it's not just in history or social studies, they're expanding these standards into every, every, or, every subject, which is commendable, but, because there's not every, not every state does that for their American Indian populations. And here in White Bear, it is very, it's a good feeling to know that we do have an Indian Education Parent Committee and Indian Education Program for our youth, but it will speak volumes to me as a parent if this district and our board can say, you know what, we're acknowledging, even though this is a small population, that as an educator, every teacher knows that every child in your classroom matters. It doesn't matter if they're only 1% of this population, every child matters. My children are only 1% of White Bear District, but they matter. So, I would appreciate if the board would be supportive of just acknowledging the importance of not only our ancestors, but their dreams, their goals, what they can do for White Bear by saying, "I'm a graduate, I'm alumni, and I'm a leader within my community and within my ethnicity." So, that's just one thing I would, I would say that it would feel great to me as a parent and an educator, that White Bear can be progressive enough to say, "We're taking a stand and we're opposing dark sides of history with beautiful light," you know, "by bringing Indigenous Peoples' Day forward." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams and Adams. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the proposed resolution? We're not going to vote on it tonight, but we do want to give everybody an opportunity to discuss this. Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to reassure Mr. Adams and...
Danielle.
And Adams. I call him Adam in the hallway. That all of the tenants, the curricular reform that is being advanced in the documents that you provide, wholeheartedly support that. As I also mentioned, I've got, and this is from my scientific background, a teensy problem with the name of the holiday. And if we're going to, you know, vote on it ultimately as a board issue, I would ask for consideration to change it from Indigenous Peoples to First Peoples, or if we want to maintain consistency with Canada, First Nations Day. Because from my scientific background, I know that no race of Homo sapiens are Indigenous to the New World, and that's the basis, but it's a tiny, tiny, really just a point, you know? And I'm not in any way going to oppose both of, you know, offering here.
Any other discussion?
And I'm not discussing, but I'm saying many peoples choose what they wish to be called, whether it's Latino or Hispanic or Indigenous or Native American or whatever. So, I figure whatever you're proposing is the one that's most acceptable to the group. So, and I think it's great that it's acknowledged, and it should have been a long time ago. So, way to go.
And I have to say too, when Ms. Fahey first brought this draft resolution, she was a middle school teacher before she joined the board, and I said, "Can you take a look at our current middle school social studies picks? I want to see how they address this period of our history." And I'll tell you, the way that Columbus's first appearance in our continent and what his impact on the Native people and the Native people's impact on him, totally different from what I read a million years ago back when I was in middle school, and I thought, "Way to go." We have a much more updated, much more modern, much more fair and balanced approach to issues involving the Native people. Yes, Mr. Kimball?
Do you, does it matter to you what, if we adopt this, what we call it?
Um, I guess for myself, it does matter. I mean, I think, and totally acknowledge, you know, your scientific perspective, but I also acknowledge the politics of identity that, sorry, what's your last name?
Marge, Newmaster.
That Board Member Newmaster is bringing up. And I mean, they're, not to discount or discredit or show any disrespect to the scientific side of it, but I mean, the, from a contemporary kind of critical race theory perspective when it comes to the power of words and how communities identify themselves, I would recommend and hope that you guys would keep it as Indigenous Peoples' Day in terms of recognizing. Because I guess from my perspective, across the world, whether it's Canada or it's New Zealand or Australia, when I think of Indigenous people, I think of the particular inhabitants, inhabitants of an area from a geopolitical standpoint before, before that area was introduced to say like colonialism or decolonialism. And so, I would prefer if you guys kept it as Indigenous Peoples' Day in terms of recognizing that history and culture of those particular areas.
Yeah, Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, and then, thank you, and then just for perspective, in my little bit of research, I'm finding Rochester, Minnesota, St. Paul, Minneapolis, maybe Red Wing districts have some lists.
Yeah, and I think, I think Red Wing schools have children from Welsh, Minnesota that attend those schools, and that would make sense because the Prairie Island Indian Community Reservation.
Right. But I don't know, those are, I don't know that there are others yet.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that I'm familiar with, within the state of Minnesota, but there are many.
Ms. Fahey? Yeah, when I looked at it too, there was, St. Paul Public Schools has it on their official calendar as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Rochester, Red Wing, the last I read, was progressing towards it. Seattle has it, looking out, there were districts in New York, districts in Massachusetts, strictly in Minnesota. I think if, you know, if White Bear Lake prides themselves as a leader in equity, it would be very important for us to do this. I mean, St. Paul and Minneapolis as cities have proclaimed it as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Dayton last year in 2016 proclaimed it as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And what a lot of, in my research, trying to look at a lot of districts' calendars around us, a lot of people just, they took Columbus Day off, but they didn't replace it with anything. So, my, in talking to other board members, they're kind of, you know, I don't, I want to say this in a certain way that doesn't denigrate anyone, but kind of glossing over it, "Okay, we won't put Columbus Day, but we won't stick our heads out and say we will acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day." So, I think it's important that White Bear Lake School District does that as a leader in equity.
Any other comments or discussions?
Yeah, just a final, as I mentioned, regardless of the name, I'm going to be...
Thank you.
Not anything that I'm gonna start jousting at windmills over and...
Right, right.
...for this resolution as well. Yeah, Mr. Kimball?
Um, continuing on, Ellen, the, it, our district doesn't, this is not a holiday for our district, and it also is not on our calendar.
It is, it's right, yeah. It's on our activities calendar.
It's not on our academic calendar.
It is.
It's not on our...
It's not on the calendar that's in our board agenda for reviewing tonight, which I believe the academic day's calendar.
But it is listed on our, the calendar that goes out to everyone, it is listed on our activities calendar.
I think everything is, Mother's Day, Boss's Day, you know?
And the other thing is I've seen that some, some cities or jurisdictions choose to use continued vote, they have Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day both acknowledged on that day.
Any comments or discussion? Yeah, Mr. Chapman?
I just briefly want to jump in, say I wholeheartedly support this as well. I think it's long overdue and will be, to let my vote for it.
Anyone else? I have to apologize to you Danielle, I have a husband with a last name different than mine, and I called you Mrs. Adams, so Ms. DeLong, my apologies.
No, no problem. I once upon a time was Miss Adams until they asked me to go through all my social security and airplaces. This time my check was that I was Mrs. Adams.
Thank you to you, Mr. Adams, and your entire family for joining us tonight. My guess is you were gonna have a yes vote at our regular meeting next month on the...
Okay, great.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thank you. When will you take it up?
The second Monday in March is our...
June 6th.
Wait, no, it's next week, it's next week, because we have, we have our spring break coming up. So, it's gonna be a fast turnaround.
Okay, yeah, great.
I have it on the...
Very good.
Are you ready?
All right, thank you.
Quick turnaround.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Item B2, and that's an update on school board superintendent goals and strategic plan priorities.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, no presentation here, but if you have any questions, try our members, appropriate members of the cabinet can consider my comment on the chair question.
Anyone have any, yeah, Mr. Mullins?
I have a, Madam Chair, I have two questions if I might, if I may. And I'm just gonna say that just because I'm looking at it sideways, so, want to make sure I'm in the right spot. On my page 11, it just talks about the demographic study is underway with the report planned for March of 2017. Just want to ask and make sure we're still on track for that, get that report in March as of now. Have you been keeping up and everything's been...
I've been in touch with Hazel, and Hazel Reiner and Dick Carlstrom are the two working on it, and we've been in contact. So, as of now, we're still planning for late March.
Okay. So, you're planning on bringing it up at the work study?
Correct.
Okay.
Page 11.
I just went back to Dr. Kazner, check I are aware, we've had a couple of new developments that have surfaced very recently, and we furnished that information to the demographer. I'm hoping everyone will hold things up, but lively time, especially in the northern part of our district, but we just received notice this past week of a major apartment complex proposed for badness.
I thought you were going to say births were running rampant or something, but...
Well, that may be happening too, but I'm not, I don't have that detail.
All right. Well, we...
And then, and I'm looking for it right now, I've taken some notes, so you gotta, please excuse me, I'm reading sideways again.
I know Jody Weaver has...
Was it controlled flipping or...
No, 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 no. Jody Weaver has tried to reorient those, but...
I was gonna print it and, but, then I was planning on the paper thing, I'm trying to... Basically, I believe that my next question was regarding the student activities, thank you. That makes it a lot easier. So, there was some student activities we were doing with transition from elementary to middle school and then into high school, and I wanted to ask if we were keeping, if we were doing a follow-up to see how those things were going, and kind of working that through to make sure the students that are, have gone through it, for example, as, as they've gone into ninth grade that we're checking up, maybe half a year to, a year later to see how that transition, and if there's anything that... So far.
Ms. Mullins, we actually can share some good leading indicator data that we have in the year from our ninth grade. These have been positive indicators that the targeted, that we're doing are working. I think part of our work is broader brush of that transition, critical transition, which is why we testified at the legislature to look at partnering with North St. Paul to be more intentional about all students, because we have, you know, multiple transitions and making sure that we're being intentional about that and broadening what we're learning from our ninth grade academy and taking that on a broader scale. So, happy to share that data if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I'm just, and I, I'm not searching for anything, I'm just really, you know, I mean, I have two kids that have recently started that transition process, and, you know, I noticed them and their friends and had those conversations, and I'm just curious to see if we're continuing to follow up.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Ms. Newmaster?
I am looking at Goal 1, Strategy 4. It's labeled, page 11 gives the description of that, and below it is some of the actions. And I know I spoke to Dr. Lovett briefly this afternoon when he caught me, and just mentioned that I felt, it says, "Every classroom will have equitable access to a core set of effective, innovative, and well-supported technology." And I would say, "Technology is a tool, and that's fine, but let's say technology and however you want to put it, tech, supplemental materials, media access to support all learning Because technology is a tool, it's a broad brush, but I would just say, add something to imply that whether they need textbooks or supplemental materials or test tubes or, or their video data projector, they should be included. But especially something other than a tool. And I guess that's just my curriculum background speaking. And on the same level, just to the far right, I just wondered what data, if we have any knowledge of what data is being collected. I know Mark gave a brief presentation to us, maybe November, but, you know, it would be interesting to see maybe another month, what kind of data is collected, and we talked about what data was collected last year, because you can't really compare apples and oranges, but it would be interesting to know, and it's never too late to start collecting it. So, that was just my thought.
Question, Lovett?
To Marge's questions, yes, I appreciated the comments that she's made about the way that's written, and we'll try to incorporate some of that for our Marge update. And then in regard to the surveying this year, I know that we've been surveying the Bright Bites with over the last couple of weeks, and I know that there was an interest in getting some additional information, more narrative information in addition to that.
Did I turn it off? Sorry.
Perhaps I've spoken too long.
Yeah, you're done, get the...
You're one, you're not... Oh, I did turn it off.
Please, that's scheduled on for our March meeting or April meeting after Mr. Garrison and other members of the team have an opportunity to analyze. But I will be coming back with some of the... I hope we were able to...
I like the ringtone, yeah. Lovely.
Could I also acknowledge to Mr. Mullins' question, Bree is actually a member of the link crew who worked with ninth grade, and if there's specific questions about that, could they go to you?
Yeah, yeah. I'm one of our wing crew student coordinators too, so I work closely with the teachers who are in charge of the program, so, if they have any questions about that.
And Madam Chair, I appreciate that, Bree. I like, I know for Sydney, I talk to her about it all the time, right, my ninth grader, but I just want to make sure that we're continuing to have those questions about past practice, what's worked, what hasn't worked right, so as we continue to make that better. I'm just...
Any other comments, questions, discussion about this item? Ms. Newmaster?
Well, and I'm kind of going back to the one I unfortunately interrupted as Dr. Lovett was speaking, but I know you were talking about the Bright Bites, not Breitbart, but Bright Bites, right?
Correct.
And I've taken a version of that survey myself, and that does collect some data, but that couldn't be all the data. I mean, that's kind of opinions and what do you think? So, I'm hoping, I know that Google can provide an overview of even something as simple as how many places have been accessed and how much time was spent on them. That's something that they can just provide. So, would be interesting.
Thank you, that's a good suggestion.
And that's nothing you really have to gather, I mean, you're just able to just ask, and it's there as another thing to think about, so.
Any other discussion on this item? Kimball?
Um, I think I'm going down to Goal 3, page 24. Communications audit, and I just, I don't remember if that's gonna be a goal or still considering or what.
Madam Chair, can I ask Marissa Vetti to respond and describe the communications audit? I'd also like to announce we sent a copy of the proposal to the board last Friday. Vetti?
We did send it out, and I have the copy of the document as well, but we've met with Barb Nichols and the... and the others, and we're just going to ask as well. And the plan is to, assuming that it's agreeable here, to move forward with doing that this spring, and then we would get the report back this summer, and that would help really to help us inform what we're doing. The three arms that we would be focusing on would be a general communications audit, but then we would also be interested in branching out a little bit more even, to look and help support our principals, our buildings, and our programs, and looking at an audit of that as well, and how the communications happen there, and then additionally, how we are communicating with our diverse audiences.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, we were saying, audit, are we actually discussing a survey here?
It will be a few different ways that she would gather information, and so it's looking at everything that we do, so when there's an electronic version of it, she'll be looking at that, and then looking at paper versions as well, having different discussions group, or discussion groups with different people. So it would be with parents, staff members, with, I know she talked about having some communication at the school board level, and I've probably worked with you, Jan, to figure out how that looks, and then having communications with cabinet level as well. So doing that if necessary, we've talked about doing a survey as well, and additionally, we've talked about working in some survey questions regarding communications related to the survey that we're doing with Springstead as well, to bring additional information there. So it'll, it'll be gathering information, not solely with the survey, but with a few different ways to do that.
So is it a foregone conclusion that we'll be contracting with Springstead then?
If we would do that, it's in the draft that we're working.
Correct, yes, we've, we have already maybe arranged this with Springstead based on the discussion that we had last year. So, the Springstead is working with us on the communications and referendum. Barb Nichol would be the one who would be doing the...
When it comes to a survey, who then would decide as to which type, the method, I'm driving at the methodology here, would it be random sampling, a stratified random sampling?
Yes.
And it's okay if you don't know that just now, but I'd like somebody to ask probably Ms. Nichol, which type she'd run.
Sure, and I could, the conversation that we had with her last week, she had said that we would be, just sort of in charge of helping her gather a diverse pool of people to talk to, so it would be really helping to make sure that we're, will be the people who are in charge of helping to find further discussion groups for that, and then a survey would be cast out a little bit more. She was the first to say that, I mean, this will give us a really good idea of it, but it's not something that she's coming back with a scientific, it's different than the survey that will be done with Springstead, if that makes sense. So it's getting an idea of, but an audit is simply an audit, it's not coming back with a research project, and something that's very, very...
So she will not, in all likelihood, then generate any margins of error like Springstead would?
Right, correct, so it's two, two different, that's two different.
All right, any other, if, Mr. Chapman?
Marissa, if you could refresh my memory, was Barb at all involved in the initial development or the initial overhaul of the website several years ago? I mean, was she a consultant at that point in time?
She was not with that. So we have, seven years ago and four years ago, and then for me when I was out on leave.
Great.
And then we had done a communications and marketing plan with her, five years ago or so. She'd come back and worked with us a bit for our recognition program, getting something started with that, and we, again, that was baby steps, but we started with that. So you worked with her in different ways, Rizdal Marketing is the firm that we worked with for the website, and she was not involved with that.
Okay.
The marketing plan?
Okay.
Talking about, you know, doing, having a good website was, is part of it.
Couldn't recall if she was involved in the website at all, because then I'm going, do we need to look elsewhere, so, okay.
Aside from being a cheerleader for us...
Yeah, okay.
And I know, Marissa, you listed all, many of the stakeholders, and I guess, just because I've been involved in community ed and the senior forum for the last year, and they're like sixty percent of our voting demographics, we really want to tie them in and make sure we're communicating, and they did have that excellent survey, and they still like paper. So if we want to communicate with them and make sure that they are with us, put them on your list. Thanks.
Anyone else on this topic? All right, we'll turn to our next item, B two B, review of the proposed achievement and integration plan. And Ms. Paul.
No, I'm sorry.
Dr. Barnett, how are you this evening?
Hello.
Good.
To new members of the board, Dr. Lovett, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you about our achievement integration plan that we are proposing for the next three years. I needed to grab my notes, because I was, I just want to start by saying thank you for the conversation that started this board meeting. When you hear a parent say, "I am proud to be in a district where every child matters", and you have board members that talk about wanting to be equity leaders and an example for other districts, and a very, very ambitious resolution here that you all are saying that you support, I'm, I just want to thank you for that, that's exciting for me, because it's, it's big work, and it just means a lot that we could have parents come here and share something, and that you could have such a thoughtful dialogue, it's just, can't ask for anything to be more excited about starting this presentation, so I just want to thank you for that. We, we're gonna talk with you about a three-year plan for our achievement integration work, and I just want to put it in the context that, you know, we're following some really good questions around our strategic plan work, which we've been very thoughtful about putting our world's best workforce work in the context of our strategic plan that we've had in place, so that they're one piece of work that we're working from. And this plan that we're looking at for the next three years, James has done a very thoughtful process to really look at data, incorporated leadership going to every single building and doing a walkthrough in the district, and classroom data observations, and he's gonna walk you through all of the pieces that came together to provide you this information tonight. But what I really want you to be, to be thinking about is the student experience, and what this information has led us to in terms of targeted interventions to impact the student experience in the terms of family engagement, in terms of how we support and provide classrooms that are welcoming for instruction and engagement of all of our students, and then for student voice to be a big part of the work that we're doing. And so, James has really done a lot of great work, he's incorporated a lot of perspective and has been very thoughtful about the proposed plan that we're gonna be sharing with you tonight. James?
Great, thank you so much, and good evening, members of the board and members of the cabinet. So, and I, this is an exciting opportunity for me. I've spent the last several months following a process to create this proposal for you all today, and what's exciting about it is that, like Sarah said earlier, just hearing the conversation that preceded me, and the responses you all had to provide that support to, and that vote of confidence to that parent, or that family, that is ensuring that their student's identity is well represented in its district is phenomenal. So I also want to say thank you. So I'll go, I'll go ahead and dive in. For those of you who are not familiar with the state's achievement integration program, the state of Minnesota proposed, or created this program with the goal of helping school districts that participate pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce the academic disparities that are based on the student's racial and economic background. So, so that's being the goal, again, it aligns with a lot of the conversation that just took place, but also just being equity-minded as we go forward, and thinking equity, thinking equity as we go forward into the next three years. So with this, the state provided a process for us to do this, because this is, it's an audacious task to come up with a plan that's gonna guide your work for the next three years, and to help school districts really be intentional about reflecting on the data that they collect and the information that they gather, how should we be thinking about this context? So the state came up with a, with research-based concepts that they refer to as equity criteria, and those equity criteria, by focusing on the equity criteria, it ensures that we maintain an equity lens and we keep students at the center. And what's exciting about that is when we look at what those equity criteria are, it talks about increasing access for students, increasing representation for students, participation for students, and monitoring the outcomes that are, that come as a result of our work with kids, so, and it's a really assuring and validating process for us. With that, you know, the state created essentially this process in four stages. The first stage they set out for us to do was to ultimately form an achievement and integration leadership team, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. The second stage was just to conduct a district-wide needs assessment that many of you in this room actually participated in, and provided incredibly helpful context and perspective, and I think through the conversations and through the, that needs assessment process, I think learned a lot about the needs of our schools as well, and informed how you all have continued to do your work independent of this plan. The third step in the process, or stage in the process was to ultimately identify priorities as a result of the needs assessment data and the analysis that we took part in. And then the fourth step is an ongoing step, which is ultimately monitoring implementation, monitoring the improvement, and essentially evaluating your effectiveness. All right. So starting here, when, in the conversations with the state, they recognized that an important part of forming the leadership team was ensuring that members of that team was one representative of the demographics of your district, so that the students, the families, the staff, the folks that were all playing a role in helping and doing this work and serving kids, all had a representative voice in this, in this plan's creation. Also, what was important to us was that, and to the state, is that we found members that have, that are aware of the organizational history, and that can provide context around multiple priorities the district has had, whether it be recent or years past. And that was something that was really helpful for us as we sought out to form that leadership team. We ultimately aligned our leadership team for the achievement integration plan with the world's best workforce committee, because we felt, one, we were encouraged to do it by the state, but we felt that that world's best workforce committee met a lot of those criteria for us. And looking at the states too, and this is where I've spent the bulk of my work over the last several months, and again, this is where a lot of you all have been able to weigh in on the process. You know, it started with us taking an opportunity to assess a lot of our systems data. So we took a few days to spend time in classrooms throughout the districts at all grade levels and all school sites, and ask critical questions around how are students being, students being represented in the schools, how do our, what do our classrooms feel like, what do they sound like qualitatively? And that, and that information was very helpful. We also spent time walking the halls, looking at student transitions, common spaces, again, how, where is a student voice present, where was it deemed welcoming or not welcoming for families? What did our school leaders and all of the members who took part in engaging that school community, how did they feel about that environment? We also had a series of surveys that went out, I spent a lot of time talking to parents on the phones and also in person, and having very thoughtful and informing conversations around their student experience. A lot of great feedback that again went into informing what our next steps are, or what our proposal, or the interventions that go onto our proposal. And what was also really valuable was talking with students. At various points over the last few months, I've been able to talk with elementary kids, I've been able to spend time in elementary classrooms, a place that was a little foreign for me, but I was welcomed, and I found a, found a place in my heart, or elementary has found a special place in my heart. I've also spent time working at the high school level, where I was able to get really critical feedback from students who have spent, you know, their, the bulk of their life as students in our district, and really insightful context around, you know, what have been the factors that have contributed to their success as they move on into the, onto college, or to post-secondary, their post-secondary opportunities, and what if they could, what would they go back and change? And again, very, very insightful context that came from those conversations. And we looked at some of our district-wide, state-reported outcomes data around our student enrollment trends, our state proficiency data, we looked at our four-year graduation rate, I spent time exploring information about our teacher demographics and our experience and credentials of our staff, and then ultimately some of our STEM course offerings, and again, our student participation and enrollment in those, in those areas. So that, there, the process for collecting data took place, and another part of that process was a data analysis. And what was really exciting there was that the state also provided a rubric for us to ensure that we had an equity-oriented analysis process. So, and by that, we looked at these seven areas here, so climate, environment, and resources, leadership and governance of the schools, our continuous improvement and inquiry systems in the school, we analyzed our instruction, our assessment, we analyzed our instruction and our assessments, and we looked at our student engagement and outcomes, and then also our family and community partners. And analyzed, again, to what degree do we feel really confident about these areas, and we're seeing the result of our work be really impactful for students in ways that we intend, and in what areas do we see an opportunity to, over the next three years, make a critical push to improve our work with kids and, kids and families? And support our developed systems that support our teachers as well. So through that process, it took us to a conversation where we started to think about our interventions, and just for, just for the sake of understanding, the interventions are all the state-approved, there's a list of state-approved objectives and activities that you can ultimately set in place that you will, you deem to be the drivers for helping you close your achievement gap or your opportunity gaps. And for us, where we went with this, this process, or with our interventions, we chose to focus in one really critical area, which was engagement. That was something that came back through our, through all of, throughout our needs assessment process at various levels. Starting the first engagement conversation was really focused on the family engagement. Some feedback that we gathered from our schools very early on was looking at, do our parents, do our students, do everyone who again benefit from our schools feel welcome, feel like their voice is represented, and it's also, it's diverse, not only diverse, but also inclusive. So are we, do we feel good about that process? We felt that there was areas for us to improve there, and part of our strategy to improve in those areas, we see a key component of that is increasing our, the role of our cultural liaisons. They play a vital role throughout the district in being that, that bridge between our teachers, our students, our families and their homes, and also out in the communities as well. And we see that with an intentional focus in expanding the number of cultural liaisons we have, and helping redefine some of their roles, we'll be able to reach, create more welcoming environments for our schools. One, by focusing on family support, so family, we have intentional social interaction with school, or in our schools, so that families are intentionally welcomed into our school settings, but also that we are building an awareness on the parent's side of what's happening in our schools, what do we want to communicate to them? So, Mung Radio is an area that we have seen as an opportunity to expand our work there and reach more parents, as well as our PK, our work with PK, and expanding our training and ensuring that we have more opportunities to engage families through our PK initiatives. and ensuring that we have more opportunities to engage families through our PK initiatives. The other side of that engagement process was helping support or provide professional development opportunities for our teachers and staff that's focusing on increasing student engagement. You know, some of the data that we got, that we, we looked at was focusing on how much time are our students spending engaged in the classroom, actively engaged in the classroom. And that was really powerful for us when we stopped to think about, you know, we have classrooms where kids are incredibly compliant, but, but are they excited and joyful about their learning? And how do we determine that? Are, you know, are kids asking questions? Is the classroom largely this teacher driving the conversation? Or do we feel good about the ratio for teacher to student interaction? Those are all things that, that came back when we, or looking for all of those qualitative and quantifying those qualitative observations that led us in a direction of identifying that our teachers and will benefit from opportunities focused on increasing student engagement in the classroom. Some work that we see doing, or that we, some efforts we will make to improve in that area is focusing on something that we're calling cultural humility. That, and it's, and it's part of our cultural competency work, which is ultimately building, understanding amongst our, our classroom leaders and our instructional and building staff around valuing the differences that, that make up, that make up that space. One of the other areas we've also want to continue our work is our data-driven dialogue. That's something that we get excited about because it helps us be more intentional about what we determine to be the needs of the students in the classroom. And we're actively aware of what kids know and do not know, what skills they have and what skills we need to develop in them. And then also Avid is a, is an area that we've, we've invested in as a district and we want to expand that, that investment there because we see an opportunity to go schoolwide with Avid in, in, by going schoolwide, improving our student engagement and, and helping our teachers develop more student engagement strategies in the classroom. The, the third targeted intervention area that we, we see to close our opportunity gaps in White Bear Lake is to continue our work with our college readiness and, and student preparation for rigorous coursework, one in all of our academic settings. A year ago, I think, yeah, a year ago, I believe, maybe it was a little bit over a year ago, we partnered with equal opportunity schools and focused, and that helped provide us, helped us provide a targeted focus in looking at our student representation in our, our advanced and college credit courses. And that work was incredibly informing and it provided a lot of momentum for us and, and, but we, we realized that we could do more in that area by not, by just focusing at the high school level, but what would happen if we started more intentionally at sixth grade? Or even at fifth grade, when kids started to transition into middle school? And even being again, more bold and thinking about all the way down to how do kids enter into our school district and are they prepared there? And again, all of this has been conversations that have been, or priorities that were identified in our world's best workforce plan, which is exciting because we've, that lets us know that although this is our next three-year plan, we've already started this work some years ago and will be continuing to, to build on that. And then one of the areas, again, to continue to expand our, our partnership with Avid, but one of the areas that we see being really valuable as part of our priorities is supporting our student transitions. And that was something I heard come up earlier. You know, it's important that our kids are better prepared both academically, but also socially for the next level. So when we think about sending our kids to high school, I think it's, you know, my conversations, I found it to be the case that a lot of our students were very prepared for the social element of the next level. So they were excited about more freedoms or more, you know, I don't know, just all these things that came socially. But academically, there wasn't as strong of an awareness of what to be expected at the next level. And it's not just helping the student, but also the teacher. You know, what is an eighth grader coming to your classroom expecting? And how do we ensure that you are, you know, in the earlier parts of your year, you have a more welcoming environment that's ushering them into high school, ushering them into sixth grade, ushering them into third grade, into school so that they are, they feel better supported through that transition? So those are all areas that we see providing a lot of support and focus to, to ensure that through those efforts, we will have more kids ready for, ready for college or ready for college credit courses, or just ready to engage in more rigorous coursework. So, and also some, I believe everyone here knows that we have, the state has designated one of our schools, Willow, Willow Lane, as a racially isolated school, or race, identified as a racially identifiable school. And what's important there is that, that the state has provided a, a set of resources and materials for, or resources to support that school's specific needs. And what, what we see exciting is an opportunity to continue some of the work that we've started through our old achievement integration plan because we found it to be effective. One of the areas, or one of the initiatives that we will continue to do is our STEM programming, which is supporting our integrated learning environment initiative. And a part of that is our partnership that we have with Tamarack Nature Center currently, where there's a focus on environmental education. And that is a partnership between Willow Lane and Otter Lake that's been incredibly effective and has evolved to not only focusing at the student level, but now it's something where the teachers are engaged in conversation with one another for how they're supporting the unique needs of students. And then there's the Inside Out program that we have partnership with the Mayo Clinic that will also continue there. And one, something that we, is an expanded effort at Willow is develop, or designating one of our cultural liaisons to work almost exclusively with that site. And, and providing all of the support that we also provide at the district level, recognizing that Willow Lane's unique needs will require someone to be more of a specialist in that setting in supporting teachers, supporting the students and supporting the families that are transitioning into our district. So. And then lastly, and this is just, the stage four is a part of the ongoing work, which focuses on, again, implementation, continuous implementation, because this program will be phased in over, over the course of three years in some sense, but also just monitoring the progress of the program and asking ourselves, you know, is it, are we reaching our goals? Based on our metrics that we set, do we feel good about the progress that we're making? And not only we feel good about the progress, but how we've achieved that goal? And ensuring that just continual, continuous monitoring and evaluating will make sure that we just continue to increase our effectiveness in, in these areas. So. So I believe that's all I have for you all. All right, thank you.
I have a question. We'll open it up to everybody else. If you go back up to page three of your presentation, which I think is page thirty-nine in the board packet. I have a question about the composition of the achievement and integration leadership team.
Sure.
Since the group of students that were really trying to benefit the most, you know, the African-American, the Latino, Native American, et cetera, would you consider maybe upping the relative percentage of those parent representatives or representatives from those racial or ethnic groups in this committee so that they might, in a relative fashion, have a stronger voice?
First, Chair, Chair, that's a great suggestion. Definitely it's something that seems very clear when you see it laid out. One thing I would like to offer though is we've learned a lot from the world's best workforce committee from this, from the lens of, of having diverse student population is an asset to us. And we've had a lot of perspective from our white families that actually has helped us make sure that what we say is actually what we mean. I think we've had, the feedback from my team has been that we've actually really come back and really been thoughtful about the language that we use. Because here we're thinking that we're being so forward-thinking and closing up to the achievement gaps when somebody can hear it as the complete opposite of what we're saying. So I do think, to your point, I think that a committee focused on the direction of this work, we want to include and have it be more representative of the families we're trying to serve. I just also want to make sure we continue to include that broader perspective so that we have, continue to have that opportunity to see that this is, this is a benefit to everybody when we get this right. So to continue to include that perspective as well. But your point's well taken.
My other question, I have never heard of cultural humility training. Can you just give me an idea of what that might look like in practice?
Well, Dr. Kasmancheck and James and I had the opportunity with Health Partners as we were working and exploring and moving forward with some of our career path we worked in terms of how we're looking at every entry point into careers, whether it's right at high school to where we're going. And some of the work that they, they've been very intentional about their equity work. And what they did is, which has been a huge paradigm shift for them, is cultural competency, which makes, gives the impression that you have to fully understand and become competent in somebody's experience in order to make an impact on them. Whereas cultural humility really takes an empathy, relationship-based approach to say, my job is to seek to understand somebody's perspective so that I can add the value that I'm seeking to add in their experience here within our schools. And so as we've kind of tried that on, it's actually helped us have a lot of sense-making within the work that we're doing. And so we've just been kind of leaning towards that framework in the work that we're doing.
Fascinating. Other questions? Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to begin by saying, in general, I think it's an excellent plan, very comprehensive. A lot of facets were considered and commend you for the effort that you put forth in developing it. Now I've got a series of questions. And I'll start with the racially isolated situation at Willow Lane. In my former district, we were part of a competitive, and the first thing that was in the offing was district-sponsored transportation to get down to Jean or balance her racially. Is that in the offing at all? Has anyone been mentioning transportation?
That is one of the, that is one of the options that this sort of education offers as a solution. We, we took a different approach in that we wanted to have a quality program for our students and we wanted them to have that, that integrated learning experience. And when, three years ago, when we came in, we had this great partner in Otter, and then we had Willow emerging that they wanted to put a STEM program into place. And so having that shared learning happen, as James said, with the adults and with the students, has created, has created really strong results to the point that our summer school program is now being shifted based on really creating the conditions for having that integrated learning opportunity for our students. So we went the route of our theory of action of if we provide a quality program and if we lean on the expertise or the strength within our district to make sure that we can build the capacity by partnering two schools in the district, then we'll provide a better learning opportunity for our students.
Yeah, and, and the, so, yeah, the transportation option was something that, like Sarah said, it was, you know, something that was offered and not heavily considered mainly because of the opportunity we had to increase the partnership from, by way, because the school is unique in so many ways, by enriching the partnerships, we found that, that this was actually a unique opportunity for our teachers to, to really work across some lines of difference and support the development of this. And as well as through our Tamarack partnership, the, it, it was an opportunity for us to learn around how can we support a diverse school? Because as, as our diversity continues to grow and improve, we will see more diversity in our classrooms, in our schools, and how, what, what opportunities can we provide there? It's been favorable as well because when we think about at this point, it's been the partnership for, how long has that been going? Three years? So there's kids now who are in middle school together, who started at different sites. And, and because they had this intentional space that wasn't just busing a kid into your classroom and not really changing anything about it, all of a sudden this kid just came up so that it was more of a balanced demographic. But having this intentional space to really learn and share perspectives around something like environmental education, we've just, we've seen a better integration at the sixth grade, seventh grade level for students who have been a part of this for a few years now.
Second question on transportation. Has the state indicated how much latitude they're going to grant to students? It looks like we're off to a very good start with this, but if it flattens or worse declines, do you have a sense of how much time you have that they'll give us before they start pursuing court ordered blessings?
Yeah, I don't entirely know.
Your point is well taken because they did take a risk on us to let us do this in terms of quality programming route. That's not, that wasn't the standard way that people went about the incentive revenue. So I think it's a good question. I, I think that there is a lot of conversation and Dr. Kasmancheck's been really the key person attending those conversations. But I think we're really going to have, be, having a lot of statewide conversations just about what, what kind of solutions should we be looking at? So I think that would be an important thing to keep on the radar, just, just so we can share in learning of how these conversations are going. I think what we're doing at Willow right now has been great for our students and, and it's created the conditions for a great learning environment, but I, I think we need to be listening to the broader conversation happening and continue to bring that back and talk about it.
Done with racial isolation. On family engagement, which in my opinion is absolutely paramount to student engagement, it all, there's a positive correlation between family engagement in the home with education and the value that they place on education, which of course then drives student engagement in the classroom, gives a teacher something to work with, you know, in a positive way. How wide of net are we prepared to cast or can we cast with fractured families? Because, you know, the single parent situation where they're working two to three jobs, the older kids are raising the younger kids and there's not a lot of space and time for family involvement there. And then that's the first part. Second part is with fractured families and the parent that is not in the household but has legal custody rights, are we prepared to try to include them in the engagement process?
Well, I think that family engagements has to go far beyond this presentation. This specific achievement integration plan is really our targeted strategies to close our achievement and opportunity gaps. So just a part of when we talk family engagement, it is far beyond just these targeted interventions, number one. Because I think we've got, we've got families that whether you're a single parent or whether you've been through some type of crisis situation, every parent I've met loves and deeply cares for their children. We want to make sure that we benefit from all of their knowledge about the unique talents and gifts that their students have. So yes, I think even, you know, we've got this focused strategy and I think that we need to have even a broader conversation about family engagement, you know, that, that addresses the much broader needs of our students. I think in terms of family engagement, and James alluded to two key points. He talked about really bringing them in as a partner and learning from them about, about their child, and then about building awareness and how they can be connected to the school. And for us, the most important thing for us to think about is what, what are we implementing and what is our structure so that we are positioned to be responding to the feedback that they give us? Because part of engaging families means that you're going to listen and then you're actually going to do something with what they tell you and be willing to actually change the way that you're doing things. And so for us, I think that's the biggest thing that James has put together here is there's a support role and a way that we can think about that cultural liaison role, but ultimately the conditions within the school, it has to be embraced that, that whenever we bring people together, that we're actually have the people there that are going to be able to be responding to the feedback that we're getting. And that's the heart of what this work is all about.
Yeah, there's, there's essentially, yeah, if you look at it as support, empowerment, and then responding. You know, the, the support piece, I think we think a lot about because that's what sort of smacks us in the face, if you like, I'm going to put it, that's what we see and we go, wow, you know, this kid needs a lot of help. But the opportunity to respond, if done right, we can create this space for parents upon enrollment. You know, what, what do you see as a, what is your desired goal for your son or daughter? So that we know that, you know, our plans align with yours. And, and you find better support on the parent's side when they know that their plans align with one another. The other part of this empowerment piece is that, you know, through my conversations, probably the most of it, probably an area where I was, I probably spent a lot of time reflecting personally was that, you know, do we actually, if parents knew more or knew better about what we were trying to do, or just knew more, and we were better about reaching them, would we see a different type of engagement from our parents? You know, I was blown away by how many times I heard a parent say, oh, I didn't know. I didn't know. I didn't know. And I go, wow, you know, that's on our website, that's, you know, we sent And I go, wow, you know, that's on our website, that's, you know, we sent this home. But again, through our efforts, we have, we can be better there. So, the family engagement piece is, yeah, so I think focusing in those three areas, support, engagement, and then respond, you know, responding to their, their needs, I think we can cover a lot of that. And, and what's been interesting about that, I guess, responding to the unique family structures, so fractured families and so forth, you know, what's been interesting is that we also recognize that by empowering the student, we, we have an opportunity to reach and address that need as well, because a lot of our kids are incredibly resourceful, incredibly engaged in our own learning, you know, I was, it never ceases to amaze me how, how many times I've seen a parent at their own, or a student at their own parent-teacher conference informing their parent about what, what their, the conversation looks like for their own ability right now. And they are, they are incredibly independent and skilled, and, and a lot of them will benefit from us empowering them as well. So, there's a number of strategies we will take to address that. Yeah.
Ladies first.
I just want to say that Willow is actually a destination because of their diversity. My niece's husband has two, two of his kids go there, and they're Cambodian, first generation here. And they like the fact that it's a makeup, where there's more people that look like them. And my daughter grew up in White Bear when she was one of two Asian students at Parkview. And she always wished we'd gone to another district. And went to the University of Minnesota, where there's lots of diversity, and other places, but, so I think sometimes it would, you'd be breaking up something beautiful. If you're doing a quality program, and you've got some real engagement with a partner school that's the same district, or it could be a neighboring district, but to have 20% of the kids be who you see when you look in a mirror is really powerful.
Yeah. And I'll second that in saying, when I think about the, the confidence of those students, when they, when they look at their, you know, they're, in essence, still a minority in the district and in their school even, when they think about how their identity is being validated, it puts a little bit more pressure on us to be intentional about how we're responding to those students, validating their identity, because there, there's just a higher concentration. So, I do, and I love how you put that, it is a destination, that, that, for some parents, that they know that if I enroll my kids in White Bear Lake, there's a place that we'll be welcoming, even if it's just surface level alone. My kid won't stand out for maybe the only, you know, fill in the blank, so.
I, I know that you were sincere and everything, but in the cold light of objectivity, you're having personal emotions running against a formal judgment, you know?
Well, I'm, you're talking about the law and busing. And I don't think the way people feel is any less important than that. You know, I look at a child and how welcome they feel, and how that parent feels going into the school where somebody speaks their language or looks like them, and that's important too. I mean, not, if you can somehow get the mix right.
That's what they're trying.
Right, right. And so, hopefully, no one will step in with a law that's just, well, this is the law. Because I think you're making a great effort to benefit all the kids.
Chapman?
I have several questions, two. First of which, with regard to the cultural liaisons, how many do we currently have? How many have we had in, on average, in the last four years or so? And at what point do you think that we would be beefing up that number, so to speak? Because I, I think that there is an important role, very important to play, especially as we get more and more diverse and, and want to make our families feel much more comfortable at home in this district. So, I'm just curious where, you know, if you could speak to those questions.
Well, I'm going to provide you some context in terms of where we've been, because that was part of your question. For a long time, we've had two cultural liaisons in the district. We've had a Mung, you know, liaison and a Latino liaison. Earlier this year, we, we, we had one that people move on to a different opportunity. And we, we were in, in the process of putting together this plan to build this needs assessment and figure out really what direction we want to go. The advantages of following the process were that we've now got more clarity on what the role needs to be, in terms of like, what currently is the role, where it needs to go, and that we have an expanded need for that kind of work. The challenge is that we've been without somebody, and so that, that's challenging for us. We actually have somebody here, Ruben Vazquez, who's sitting over here, he's actually going to be doing some consulting with us to provide some additional support for working with our Latino families. Right now, we've got the position posted for the cultural liaison, we want to speak fluent Spanish, but we, we need to make sure that we get the right fit for us. And so, we're thankful that, Ruben, he was the former director of family engagement in Minneapolis Public Schools, and he actually just presented at Willow Lane and did a presentation in their summit, and was really highly, you know, well-received by the staff and students for, you know, just sharing his story and providing a connection there. So, right now, in terms of where we've been, we're looking at going from two to four. And three would really be looking for that broader district work, and, and so we would be doing, we would be hiring two people for district-wide work. There's a gentleman by the name of Brandon Johnson, who has been working at Willow Lane for the last couple of years. Part of his role has been a liaison-type role, and then behavior specialist. And what we've, what we're finding is that he, he really, as, the work that he's been doing in the liaison role needs to be expanded to full-time because of, you know, the students that are struggling in reading and math, it's not necessarily because of reading and math. It's about, you know, that, that relationship piece or understanding, connecting with the family, and he's very gifted in that role. So, he will be expanding to a full-time there. So, it'll be four total, one specifically working with, with Willow Lane, and then three district-wide. Does that answer your?
Yeah, so we, gosh, I was thinking, for some reason, I was thinking we had three or four cultural liaisons at one time, we've only had the two?
Oh, Dr. I was just saying that we, there's two part-time liaisons in the preschool program.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
Well, and that, and I, just to build on the, you know, this, this plan, putting together this plan has just been incredibly informative for us. And when we think about, like Sarah said, identifying the actual role, and, and looking at it at the systems level, because even with, 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 with three, it's, it's four, it's, it's still an incredibly challenging role to play across, you know, 9,000 kids. So, when we think about the support that we're going to provide, we want it to be spot-on in, in ensuring that, you know, we found the right person who was ready for, to, to meet what the district priorities are. And we're excited, we think we're, we think we're there. The other thing about the cultural liaison role now that we've looked at is, you know, this person could actually be a, a specialist in a sense of helping inform, because Brandon is, Brandon's work at Willow has, has gotten me to think about this, you know, he's been incredibly helpful with helping teachers engage, or creating engaging and welcoming classrooms with students that are different. And we, we haven't really been intentional thus far about how do we help our teachers create a welcoming space, and not so much thinking about how do we help that student fit into the classroom? So, so Brandon will really be our first sort of specialist in that way, that we have full-time. And from there, we'll be able to continue the work that the cultural liaisons have been engaging in, and, and which has been great work, and they, they've built remarkable relationships with families. And through our, by losing one of them, we've been able to identify the types of supports that families have been used to receiving, so we can again, at a systems level, create a, a structure that can support all of our families without, without a particular set of needs, and not, and again, not sort of lose sight of them through a longstanding role that's, that someone has basically just gotten really good at doing, or meeting the needs of certain families, so, you know. Hello?
Chapman, you had additional questions?
I did. Well, right along the, that track with respect to the cultural liaison, so if we are embarking on a consulting arrangement, I'm, am I correct in assuming that over the course of three years, we're looking at doing something sooner rather than later with respect to cultural liaison?
Absolutely. We'd be looking at hiring the positions now in preparation for next year, and our, with Mr. Vazquez, is really trying to make sure that we bring in some expertise and fill the gap right now while we're waiting for, once we go through the process and hire, and then that person needs to leave their current job. We just don't want a month, another month to pass without really being in some additional supports.
And the only other questions I had had to, as you know, I like, I get into these committee numbers. With respect to the committee makeup, I see that there's 12 parents listed here. But then down below, if I'm, if, you know, and maybe I'm totally misinterpreting this, we've got 30 people or 30 demographic counts there, 21 white, two blacks, so forth. Am I, what am I missing? I mean, there, there must be a, somebody, individuals are being counted in two different categories or two or more? Is that?
Yeah, what, what we wanted to do was honor what the statute said for the committee makeup and making sure that we had North and South Side representation. And when we had our curriculum, you know, council, CCAT, we were really heavily on one side of the district and not the others. We wanted to make sure that we were looking across all levels of school, across both sides of the district, meeting the demographics, meeting different perspectives on participants. So, we took, if you look, it's really kind of splicing how the statute lays out what it means to have representative demographics and making sure we hit it in all three areas.
Right. But, but in terms of the parent count, there's 12 shown, that we're showing.
Yeah, I think you're right in that some of them are duplicate report, I mean, someone may fit in both areas, even, you know, Mung and Asian, is it probably?
Well, actually, it's because some of our staff also are parents, some of the rowing members are also parents.
Okay.
You know, so we've got.
So, you're not looking just at the 12 that are listed as parents here?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. That's what I needed to get clarification on.
Other questions or discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Anna, just a quick one. Plan comes to get passed, adopted, implemented, budget impacts?
So, this is just a slice of our budget, you know, that, this is, these are the interventions that are going to be funded through this budget. So, our funding for this is, you know, around a million dollars. So, that's the target of interventions for use of this money that we get through the state for achievement integration.
Any other questions?
Just say we're very fortunate. I, I think I told, I might have told you the wrong time, but I'm just super grateful that Chris Dreyfus, Principal at Willow Lane, is here. I know we've talked quite a bit about Willow Lane, but at least to honor the fact that she came and acknowledge that she's here, I very much appreciate it.
That was her.
And thank you, Mr. Barnett, Ms. Paul, Ms. Dreyfus, for joining us here tonight.
There's nothing more honoring to the work than with a tiny district to ask questions, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Turn to our next discussion item B3, and that's, first of all, full year calendars for 2017-18 and 2018-19. And this is Ms. Paul and Ms. Gores. Dr. Lovett, would you want to do an introduction?
I'll make it very, very brief, because we don't have a lengthy presentation, although there are a couple of very small modifications that I think Ms. Paul and Ms. Gores will identify. Otherwise, if you'd really like the calendar, we'd be happy to recommend it for next month.
Okay.
All right, well, I would. Should we tell about some of the changes? We've, we've gotten some feedback from teachers and parents, so we want to move forward with a couple of changes. First of all, our welcome-back conferences. By the way, there are two districts already that are transforming their calendars to go with what we are doing, so I think that's very honoring to the fact that, that what we've done and how we've been able to articulate it, and the feedback of parents and the talk that happens is actually impacting other people looking at their calendar design. So, I think that's affirming to us to keep moving in this direction. Our welcome-back conferences, we have one that's going to take place during the workshop week, and then one on Labor Day. We originally had it that that would happen on the Thursday, August 31st. We're, we're going to need to move that to August 30th. So, just for your context, to know that feedback from staff and from parents was that they don't want to have that welcome-back conference when it's so close to being, we'll go out of town on a long weekend, and so we're, we're going to make that change. The second change is we, we're, our collaboration days and our professional development are really trying to build capacity for some of the strategies that we've been talking about in terms of data-driven dialogue and adjusting your instruction to meet student needs. We work with a consultant on that work who we, her availability is on September 30th, which is a huge opportunity for us to not train just a small group of people, but actually bring that training school-wide. So, we're going to be moving the October 2nd Collaboration Day, that's on Monday, October 2nd, we're going to move that to Friday, September 30th. So, it's not a change in the number of days, or it's just a small change from the Friday to the Monday in order to align with what we're wanting to do.
Yeah, we've already passed September, no, we haven't. It's had August or?
September 29th.
Oh, that is a Friday, never mind.
Yeah. So, those are the two changes that, that are small changes based on what we've been on.
I'm sorry, I'm, we were shuffling papers here, and I missed the first one. What was the first one, Sarah?
So, our welcome-back conferences that we have at the beginning of the year. Right now, we have, and it, it would, it's, one of the days is in the workshop week, and it's on, we had originally had it for the August 31st, it's now going to be on August 30th, which, just to accommodate feedback from parents and staff.
I had an email this morning from a South Campus teacher, and I did reach out to Linda and to Mike McKenzie about this, raising a concern about the calendar, which has been addressed, but she said that next year in 2018, Easter Sunday is April 1, and she noted that the calendar had the teachers working on Good Friday, which was March 30th. It's a student non-contact day, but the teachers are working, and she said about that. And I got information back from Mr. McKenzie that this issue is discussed in detail developing the calendar, and that the trade-off was the teachers could either have off March 30th, Good Friday, or December 22nd, the Friday before Christian holiday, Christmas, and whatnot. And McKenzie, Mr. McKenzie thought that, Dr. McKenzie thought that the teachers would much prefer having that Friday, December 22nd off. And Mike also told me that the teacher could, if she felt strongly about not working on Good, take that Friday off as an essential day for religious observances, and the time that she took off would only be doctor gets sick pay and not annual leave, so she'd still get paid. That aside her, so. I didn't point out, as I usually do, that we don't get Yom Kippur off, and we don't get egg off, but, so.
Would a split day be an option there? Because I'm thinking Good Friday is really the issue's in the afternoon.
Well, I'm sorry, was a question?
Oh, just have a teacher workday from, you know, seven to, well, four hours, seven to 11, something like that.
We talked about it.
You know, as a potential, doesn't have a break from workdays that if we do have as a half-day, but they could certainly use a half-day of just their essential leave then to, if they chose to do that rather than a full day, because it is a religious holiday. We, we've had these conversations about Good Friday when we traded out from Martin Luther King Day off, because of the feed day, the feedback that we got from a number of our staff, that was a non-student day also, and so it was the number of staff that really wanted to go celebrate their.
go celebrate their, that day with their families and the community. So that's what became a holiday in exchange for the Good Friday. So it, no matter when we, when we put in has some issues.
Okay, ladies. Crystal ball time, and really, I realize wishful thinking on my part, but my children, when they were going to school, spent most of it in the South and Southeast, ranging from Texas to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And I realize there are laws in place here in Minnesota, that two-thirds of the nation start school before Labor Day and they are done by Memorial Day. What's the likelihood of that ever coming to pass?
Well, I think the state fair. I think Dr. Kazmicek, he might know more about that than me. Where's your crystal ball on this one?
Depends if the legislature ever changes that, allows us to go earlier.
Or if you can't?
No, if we ever have a major construction project in the district, then we could start, we could adjust our starting in. So we just do a series of years where there's major construction projects.
Some districts do that.
Questions about the calendar, otherwise it's welcome.
Well, it's next Monday. I just had a quick, the, reading the original one with the two extra days, the rationale was they were in for teacher collaboration. So on those particular days, you just talked about the availability of a person, is it going to be straight professional development all day? Is there going to actually need and collaborate?
Thank you for that question. It's paired with professional development and collaboration time. So that's why it's two days, but it's actually strategically placed throughout the calendar so that it's not full day P and then you run into your classroom and, you know, so where we could, that's what, how we were able to make them four days. And, yeah, so the pairing was very intentional, professional development and then collaboration time with your team.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, thank you, Linda, thank you, Sarah. We'll turn to our last discussion on draft community survey, and we will call on Superintendent elect to Dr. Wayne Kazmicek and Marissa Diddy.
Well, we have a whole hour. Push your luck. We actually thought we would be pushed up against eight o'clock, and so we planned on a very short presentation, so we might be in for a treat. So just to update you on our, we have a, it came up earlier, the draft survey for, with Springstead. So we're working on a draft. The draft is based on our 2011 survey that was, that was given back during that successful operating levy campaign. We have changes to make, just to update, you know, things have changed in the last few years, so we want to update the questions that we ask so that it's a better reflection of what's going on in the district right now. So we're working on that. In addition, Marissa mentioned, we have, we want to develop some questions that we'll ask about communication sources and preferred methods of communication with the public. So that will provide us some very good feedback as well. So we'll piggyback that, those, those questions with the work Marissa's anticipating to do with the communications on it. Additionally, this question, I don't believe has been asked before, but I think it's important that we ask a question related to the length of the, the number of years of the operating levy renewal. So there have been different conversations about the operating levy, and I, and I know at our, our training with Springstead a couple of weeks ago, the number of years for which a operating levy is in place or that the, that it's on, whether or not a levy is asked for five years or six years, seven years, up to 10 years, the number of years has not impacted the result. So we should, we want to test that idea here in White Bear Lake so that we can make a decision about the length of time. When this was originally passed in '07, it was for five years. In 2011, we passed it for six. So I think it's reasonable to think about doing something other than six. And there are some reasons to think about that. One is if we, I mean, I think the, the less we go back to the voters for this renewal, it's probably a better idea. I think there, there have been some times when districts feel a little bit paralyzed around elections, so there's some reluctance to perhaps do certain things or do certain projects, or maybe building projects are delayed because there's a fear of this, the next election is just so close. And I, I think we just have to have that conversation, and this data will provide us some very valuable insight. We can talk about that late May and then into the summer about what the length might be. If White Bear Lake is similar to other school districts in the state, the length would not impact the result of the election. So that'll be a very important question that we, that we crafted the right way. So key timeline, you've seen this before, we won't, we won't go through it now, we'll just speak as it relates to the survey. So right now, we're working on that survey, so in March we'll continue, well, actually we're going to try to get it to Springstead in the next day or two, a draft. They'll do some work on it, we'll, we'll talk with them, they'll shoot us back a draft, and we'll do some back and forth on it so that hopefully by, by mid-March, we wrap that up, or maybe the third week of March, we'd wrap it up, so they'd be ready to go. So then through the month of April, it would be administered, and we would have the results back in May for us to review at our May work-study meeting. So that's the timeline related to the survey. And we're certainly open to talking about more of the timeline, but again, you've seen that, and tonight's focus was just on, an update on the survey instrument.
Questions for either Wayne or Marissa?
Just more of a comment. I like the idea of, of giving serious consideration to a longer period of time, especially with, you know, unless something really takes a nosedive economically between now and November, we're in a much better shape compared to what, as we've seen in recent years, where we could be as far as going before the voters with a long-term proposal. So I think that would make a lot of sense to look at.
And if we decide not to ask for an increase, I think the voters would be much more hoopatetic with a longer period of time if there's no increase in their property taxes, other than the inflationary increase which we had entered, love and built into the levy.
And we're not anticipating at this point recommending anything above where we're at right now. So in fact, the, the tax impact, but actually there'd be a reduction in year one, and so we'd have to be careful, we'd talk about that, because it's not a huge reduction, but it's at a minimum flat and just a slight decrease because we have to, we lock in at, at, at a certain rate during the election year and we don't actually increase that, that last year, we actually stay flat for the next year as well. So that actually allows us to, to drop. So that's a very positive message. We're allowing a tax increase, assuming that we don't ask for more than what we currently have, and there's no plan to do that.
This is probably a foolish question, but who pays for the cost of the election? The district?
Yes.
So it, and if I recall, they were talking about what a school board election cost or a election, was it like 30,000 or something?
Correct.
Yeah. So I mean, they have one every five years versus 10.
And then if you think about the work we'll ultimately do with facilities planning, which may lead to a potential question down the road in two or three years perhaps, again, then we, we stack elections to close a year, it's maybe not a best strategy.
And I'm just thinking the cost of all the printing and all the things that you do economically makes more sense if it doesn't seem to have an impact.
Yeah, just a comment on election timing. The, in the slides that everyone should have now on Springstead, talk specifically about results of even-year, odd-year elections and proximity to the general elections, things like that. And it's direct information, it's very good, very pointed, and, you know, I know you're reviewing it, but everyone should, yeah, give us good guidance on, we'd like to see something this year.
We reviewed some of that a few, a few board meetings ago. We looked at the results from various years, types of years, presidential versus gubernatorial versus off-year. So this, so odd-year, without the national races going on, it's a, it's a good time to be going to the voters.
Other discussion, questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Marissa, Lynn.
Sorry about the brevity.
I had it.
Numbers?
All right, just a social note, for those of you who gave me an RSVP for the Donatelli's tomorrow, we'll meet there at 11:30. And for those of you who made an RSVP for Manito Grill, we have reservations there, we'll meet there at 6:00 PM. All right?
What about?
6:00 PM. If you want me to, I can send out an email tomorrow morning with those times, just to, right?
Public meeting here tomorrow?
Yes, and the 4:30 to 5:30 in this room is the opportunity for Dr. Kazmicek to meet with members of the community, and the board is encouraged to be there as well. So if you can make it here, 4:30, that would be terrific. So seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would adjourn.
Second that, we are adjourned. Everybody.
Is this on a live?
Yeah.